Good evening, everyone. In accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA 1046 PL 1975, C-231-S-1 amended 2006 C-70-S-2, the Asbury Park Board of Education has provided adequate notice of this meeting by sending a notice of the time, date, location, and to the extent known, the agenda of this meeting to the Asbury Park Press and the New Coaster on January 4th, 2019 by email. Copies of this notice have also been placed at the Administration Building Bulletin Board, District Schools, Asbury Park Municipal Building, Asbury Park Police Department, and filed with the City Clerk on January 4th, 2019. Our mission statement, "Asbury Park School District will provide all students with a comprehensive and progressive education where everyone possesses skills and character to succeed in a diverse, evolving global society." Mr. Hastings, roll call, please.
Ms. Breach, Mr. Grillo, Ms. Jones, Mr. Lattaraca, Ms. Lozinski, Mr. Pinkney, Mr. Saunders, Ms. Etienne, Ms. Anderson.
Please stand for the black screen. Mr. Lattaraca, are you prepared to give us a report on the Finance Committee, please?
Yes, Finance Committee met. The first issue was 2020 budget. The Administration has submitted the tentative budget that we looked at at our special meeting for County Superintendent Review. We discussed the tax increase and want to get clarification on how the pilots are treated in the tax base in determining that. It seems that there is a value to the land that is being considered in what, in the tax base, but not the improvement is the most recent understanding I got from our discussion with the City Manager. Because we talked about setting a meeting with the Mayor to discuss this, and I guess he had reached out as well. And point number two about city partnerships, we did have that meeting this morning, and I think maybe others might want to report out their perceptions of that. The Charter School College Achieve is moving out to Neptune, so we're going to have to provide transportation for the hard Asbury Park students to attend that. Our point three, our audits, New Jersey Department of Legislative Services is continuing to audit their, maybe setting some kind of record in terms of...[233.12][233.12](Laughter) Yeah.[235.12][235.12](Laughter) And our fourth item, Joe Grillo, I understand, is leading an initiative. We are looking at two, trying to set up two town halls for the year. He mentioned that he had reached out and the House of Independence would offer their space for free in April if we can find a date and make that work. I think from the meeting this morning with the City, we're kind of gelling around the idea that the first town hall would primarily be getting word out, trying to get a lot of people there, talk about a lot of the positives about our improvements and our programs to draw people, and then in a limited fashion, bring up the budget issues, a follow-up town hall meeting as we're moving forward in presenting what the next few years are going to look like. The next town hall could be focused much more on the budget. And then the final point, and again, as it relates to the budget, it's huge. We were counting on a wellness initiative from our new health insurance broker. If we can get our claims below a 1.0, meaning our claims are currently exceeding our premium payments, we have no options to look anywhere else for any real financial savings. And, well, Mr. Hastings has reached out a number of times, we're not really getting a response. So the committee is recommending that, at the very least, we would put out new proposals for insurance brokers and see if that results in any kind of improvement in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Lattaraca. Ms. Lozinski, would you like to report both on policy and athletics?
The first thing, we didn't have a policy meeting because all the items on your agenda are second readings. There wasn't anything new to bring up. But what I do like to mention in regards to policy, I went to the Sustainable Jersey for Schools program in Trenton at the end of February and learned a little bit about the tracking spreadsheet, et cetera, what's required, and if the Policy Committee can do anything for the green teams, because there's a lot of policy issues here, and if the Board adopts a policy, it's spread about, spread not only in the district, but each school that has a green team, we get points for it. So if there's anything we can do, just ask us. Athletics met the other day. We will have the Title IX Audit Book for you to look at at the next meeting. The information is getting assembled. It's not complete yet, but whatever we have next month, we'll have it at the meeting so you can look at it. So we'll finally have a document that shows us how we're doing Title IX-wise in sports. And also, it was brought up that there are enough girls to make a soccer team at the high school. There's some overlap with some of the volleyball girls, so I don't know if they'll be able to keep their numbers up. We had some discussion about that. That's something the Administration is going to have to follow up with reference to, whether there's going to be actually be a team, how the coaching's going to be done. And that's it, except for the banquet. We're going to have a banquet meeting, the athletic banquet, that's going to be held this year at the Asbury again, and that'll be followed up on next month.
Do you have a list of the banquet?
The banquet is, um, was it, uh, May? May, 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 hold on. I think it's, was it the May 7th or 8th, I believe? I'll have to check on, it's in May, though. It's about the same time it was last year. Oh, wait, maybe it's not, I really don't know. The county's better at that than I am. I think it's...
(Inaudible).
When's the Business Administrators Convention? I think it's that week. Is it June? Maybe it's the first week in June now? Yeah, I think it's the first week in June, then. Yeah, I just don't have the date. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Lozinski. Mr. Hastings, would you report out on buildings and grounds, please?
I believe Mr. Lattaraca was going to...
Oh, okay, would you please? Okay, thank you.
There were no facility use requests. Asbury Park Little League has paid their $1,000 use fee. Still dealing with the zoning board with regard to the renovations at the office building, and so that's a project still in progress. We'll be mapping all buildings for first responders to have electronic maps so they can have a quicker response time, so there's a joint project with regard to that. And Ms. Etienne and I did walk the high school a few weeks back. I think we're in pretty good shape. There are a couple of issues with regard to the bathroom on the fourth floor, but that was a result of recent vandalism. And lockers were improperly painted on the fourth floor where the paint didn't cover, so those things will need to be addressed. There's some cosmetic changes in the stairwells as well, but overall, we didn't see significant and high-cost items to address. Thank you.
Were there any questions? Thank you. Mr. Lattaraca. Mr. Pinkney, are you ready for curriculum?
For curriculum, we discussed approval for grants, school trips, and conferences. In addition to that, we seek approval for the Let's Be Friends Second Grade Curriculum Guide to be piloted at Barack Obama Elementary School. Also, Dr. Martin Luther King Middle School to participate in the Monmouth University Right on Sports Summer Program. Approval for the mentorship program sponsored by the Urban League of Morris County. This is a pre-apprentice program with JCPN and First Energy Corp. Provide interest, interested students with support in tutoring, mentoring, and real-life practical experiences. Also discussed, Jersey Care is a nonprofit organization to partner with the Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Middle School. The organization recruits and engages volunteers in rewarding effective efforts that address community identified needs. That partnership will allow middle school to identify needs and implement volunteer projects to meet those needs, such as landscaping, urals, building benches, picnic tables, and workshops. Also spoke about Martin Luther King Junior Middle School hosting the Parents as Champions Workshop. We're also recommending approval for this STEAM Pre-K through 5 Summer School Program, also Asbury Park High School Buy Back and Credit Recovery Summer Program. Also recommending approval for Asbury Park School District Community Health Fair in collaboration with Community Affairs. That'll be April 17th. Also, two-step entertainment to provide DJ services for that community health fair. And approval for Mr. Happy to provide a bouncy horse rental for the health fair as well. Also spoke about the approval for the MOU between Asbury Park Board of Education Schools and Bloomfield College. The MOU is to develop a partnership between Bloomfield College and Asbury Park Board of Education to create and nurture programs, projects, and activities that will address college access and persistence challenges for students from Asbury Park. That will also include a scholarship program for the 2019, 2020 academic school year. That includes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Pinkney. Are there any questions, Madam Superintendent?
Good evening. I just want to add, we have four addenda items there, and I was not able to review these with Mr. Pinkney, our Chair, so, Mr. Pinkney, as Chair, I'm going to just cover those items, okay? One, item number one on the addenda refers to just payment of services to staff, services rendered. Item number two refers to the need to have social and emotional training in our after-school program. We'd like to leverage the extended-day program opportunities to provide additional instruction around how we learn, meaning our social and emotional initiative. So that relates to the second step program, and we want to train the after-school staff who are not at all trained in second step. The third item is, again, to further our social and emotional learning initiative. We want to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Center for Support of Schools, which has a mentoring component that we know is directly related to addressing those social and emotional needs of our children. The last item is, it may appear at a glance to be a high-ticket item, but I want to be very clear, our Law and Public Safety Academy, we, as we have introduced another grade level in our academies every year, the year prior, we have to write curriculum for that. So item number four reflects the need to write curriculum for the Law and Public Safety Academy. Three courses at $360 per unit for a total of four units is what is included in that cost. That completes the addenda.
Any questions, Ms. Lattaraca?
I was just wondering what the Buy Back and Credit Recovery Program is.
You're, I'm not sure. You're questioning what is buyback and credit recovery?
Yes.
Yes. So that's a mechanism we have in summer school for our high school students. I'm going to let Debbie Sylvia give you a little more details on that.
So, like Ms. Gray was saying, in summer school, students go to either make up a class if they failed in summer school, which would be our credit recovery, or they buy back ours. So we have students that passed classes, but we can't issue them credit for the classes because of seat time. So if they had too many absences, they automatically lose credit in the course even if they had a passing grade. So they need to make up seat time in the summer in order to get the credit restored. Okay?
Second is buyback.
We refer to that as buyback. If you just owe the time and you pass the class, and credit recovery is if you fail the class, you need to get the credit back.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Madam Superintendent. So this is the month that we are to report out on our Board goals. Our first Board goal was to review policy and the procedure for Board of Education Student Representative and begin implementing that during the current school year. Ms. Lozinski has completed that goal, if you would like to elaborate.
Well, the first step to the goal, the policy adoption of the student representative as the Board wished to add to it, was adopted November 15th. After that, the Policy Committee doesn't have a responsibility. I don't know what the status is of the follow-up election or anything like that, but the policy was done, second reading on November 15th.
And so now for the second step, I would refer to Madam Superintendent.
Good evening. I want to talk to you about the student rep. Very delighted to share the, a little bit about our student rep. I've had conversations with Principal Baumgartner, and we've been able to identify a student per the policy, that meets the criteria. It was our hope that she would have been able to miss work tonight, but that is not an option. So moving forward, we'll be able to give her more timely notice of the Board meetings. She's a junior at Asbury Park High School. She's a member of the Dream Academy. Through the Dream Academy, she's also attending Brookdale Community College. She's in her second semester of earning her Liberal Arts Associate Degree. As a senior, she will receive both her high school diploma and the Associate's Degree. Very active in the school. She's on the girls' basketball team for the past three years. She's currently president of the junior class and is in the National Honor Society. She's taken part in the Asbury Park Waterfront Initiative with her cohorts and the initiation of the Asbury Park Proclamation for January being observed against sex trafficking. She's a member of the Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Scroll of Honor Award from the Asbury Park High School, and clearly, this is a student that's building, that building a brighter future for is her reality. So I'm very delighted that Principal Baumgartner and her team at the high school went through the process and selected Ms. Elia Tully to be our student rep, and we expect that she'll be able to start at the April Board meeting.
Thank you very much, Madam Superintendent. So that satisfies Board one. The second one is to develop and implement a plan for continuous Board professional development in order to achieve Board certification. So there are meetings that have been conducted. I know that we do have one certified Board member, which is Mrs. Carol Jones, and it's my understanding that, Ms. Lozinski, you also are certified. I did speak with Ms. Wyankoff, our New Jersey School Board Representative. She will be in next month or so. She will, I believe, make a presentation. She's, you know, there's a couple of things that she needed to address before we present you with your certification, but we would like to acknowledge the both of you here. Also, she is going to allow each member, or tell each member where you stand, what your status is, how many credits you have earned, and what you need to earn. So we are, we are going to continue with those trainings. And the third Board goal is to have a town hall for telling our story, and I know that Ms., Madam Vice President and Mr. Grillo have been working on putting that together. I believe he has a tentative date of April 23rd, so that's a tentative date. He's looking at, the venue would be the Independence. And I will wait until, I don't want to... Tentatively. And the topics that he wanted to address, one is the budget, of course, and then also telling our story, you know, the strides that we have made, what we are doing here in the district, and how we are moving forward with our Superintendent and her goals, our goals, and, you know, invite the, of course, invite the community. So that's where we are there with our goals. Mrs. Jones?
We're going to arrange for refreshments to pull the people in?
I believe so, but, you know, don't hold me to that. That's between Mr. Grillo and Ms. Etienne.
Okay.
Okay. So, so that's the report for our Board Goals, our action plan. And that concludes my report, unless there are any questions. Great, thank you.
Can I ask a question on one of the agenda items? Jeff didn't go, so I want to ask a question about one of his items, if I may. I wanted to, you had your addendum for the ESCO. I was, I was wondering, is there a cost associated with that?
No. So there's two items I was going to bring to your attention on the business agenda, first being on C-4 number 11, the universal, a uniform agreement with law enforcement and the Board. That's an annual renewal, that's mandated. We're doing it a little bit late this year because the annual agreement was revised by the county prosecutor and the state, so that was just released in the past month or two. And we had a meeting with Superintendent, I believe, the State Monitor, and Ms. Brown, with Police Chief and some of his representatives, and discussed some of the changes to the agreement, and those have now been forwarded for signatures by the various parties that sign those things. As Ms. Lozinski noted, the other item was on C-6, which is the Authorization to Competitive Contract for an Energy Services Company. We've had several meetings over the past several months. We've had an audit through the DPU that identified some savings opportunities. We've met with our Bond Counsel and our Financial Advisor as well to talk about the process and how we can go about getting improvements to the buildings and having the energy savings pay for those improvements over time. We had a meeting as late as beginning of this week, end of last week, and went through that process. I also sent some information to the Board regarding that process. There is no cost up until we actually begin to execute the projects. So this, I'm sorry, this resolution is authorizing us to move forward with the competitive contracting process. The Board can then go about evaluating the responses that we get to that and select a energy services company that would then begin some audit process, some audit information on the buildings, and confirm potential savings. And then after that point, we may start to incur costs, but at this point, there's no cost associated, and we can stop, you know, if we're not pleased with the services.
Thank you, Mr. Hastings. So what I would like to do, you know, if you have any other questions, okay, great, because I just wanted you to hold up on this for just a minute. I am now going to ask Board Counsel, he has some information for us regarding policy.
I just wanted to call to the Board's attention that this evening you have some policies that are up for first reading or some amendments to policies. And I note that item number B-9M Like Mary, I believe that these are on the agenda tonight as a result of Policy Alert Update 217 from Strauss Esme. While I did not, wasn't asked to review these policies or the addenda to the policies that are on your agenda, I note that page B-9M, which is the transgender policy, policy number 5756, from my recollection, roughly three to five months ago, the Board adopted a transgender policy, which is very progressive and, I think, a very good one. My concern is that if tonight the Board votes on item B-9M, again, I can't speak to the other ones that are up for tonight because I haven't reviewed them, haven't been asked to review them. But my concern is that if this policy is adopted tonight as it's written, I don't know that it contains or is harmonized with the policy that the Board previously adopted. So my concern is that some of the items that were very thoughtful in the previous policy may not be included, I don't believe they're included, in this policy that's up tonight, and it would essentially override the Board's prior adopted policy. So I just want everyone to be aware of that, and I don't know if that should be tabled or further considered, but before any action's taken on it, I want the Board to be aware of this.
I would, I would just hold off till next month, then. I would take it off the tonight's agenda, and then we'll talk about it and look over it next month for policies. Doesn't hurt one more month since we already have a very thorough policy.
I tend to agree with that, but again, I also want to raise the issue that I don't know if the same is true for these other policies that are on tonight.
Could we table them all?
I don't see why you could not do that.
Is the Board in agreement with table, so, so next month? So do I have to make a motion?
All that you would need to do is when you're in the regular meeting, you can, someone can make a motion to table specific policies or all of them, should they wish to do so for, you know, we can call it table or postpone them for a month, and then I'll await any direction as to whether or not I'm going to be involved going forward.
If I remember, some of them are just wording changes, some of the mandated policies. There weren't any changes, changes, like the choices or things that we had already as a Board. It was just cross out this and put bold. It wasn't like a new policy, there were mandated changes to wording, so...
Again, the only one that stuck out in my mind is the transgender one, so I can't speak to the others just because I haven't reviewed them to see what the major changes are.
So would the Board be in favor of table all of those until next month?
If adopted this evening, can they be amended at the next meeting?
Yeah, there's nothing to prevent anything from being amended at any time.
Through one reading, or would they be two readings?
You do two readings.
Okay.
Yeah, so if we, if we amend, yeah, we could still adopt them. I don't know, some of these might have, you know, date, you know, please adopt by certain dates and stuff.
Right, and as I said, I haven't reviewed them to know whether or not they are, you know, time-sensitive.
So I think... So, put a table?
You could certainly just table the transgender one and approve everything else should you wish to do.
Yeah, I would, I would do that, because a lot of these are just wording changes, mandated wording changes. There weren't a lot of changes. And I believe this transgender policy is the result of the final version after the meetings, the committee meetings in the state, so we already adopted a, you know, proactive policy, so I agree with that one. But the other ones are just little changes, cross outs, and bolds.
Seeing that you're Chair of Policy, I'll need you to make a motion, if you wouldn't mind, on the gender one, and then we can accept the others.
Sure.
Okay, when we get to that. Thank you. Thank you. Open for public participation, and that is in accordance with Board Policy 0167. Okay, policy board, sorry, public participation is closed. Review of regular meeting agenda items.
Mr. Hastings?
We covered those earlier with the MOU for law enforcement and the ESCO.
So we're going to adjourn. Need a motion to adjourn.
Move it. Second.
Okay, in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, great, thank you.